...provided for the public's reading law has been satisfied. Notice was properly given. Said notice having been transmitted to the Courier-News and Star Ledger on January 7th through 13th as well as posted on the building board and report document. That is my end of work, ladies and gentlemen.
Yes, Councilmember Turner?
Here.
Reese?
Here.
Matt, Asadon Roehl, Paul Storch, Asadon Roehl, Paul Williams, Asadon Roehl, Paul, Chairman Reed?
Here.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
Former members of the three, Asad, the other one.
Will you please rise for the Cudges and Legions and remain standing for the Pennsylvania District. The Cudges and Legions.
I would wave this flag to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the love of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit to all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
We have a motion to approve the following minutes at present, regular meetings August 19 through 13, special meeting August 26, 2013, and regular meetings September 9, 2013.
So moved.
Second. Roehl, Paul.
Councilmember Turner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
The minutes are through. Thank you. Do we have any ceremonial matters?
None at this time.
Any communications from the mayor?
Yes. For my honor, the mayor's correspondent dated September 24, 2013, notifying the city clerk of the designation of Mayor Sharon Robinson-Briggs as acting city administrator from September 24, 2013 through October 6, 2013, and the appointment of Mr. Augustine though as acting city administrator effective October 7, 2013.
Are there any other communications or petitions?
Correspondent dated September 16, 2013, for Mr. Eric Berry, notifying the city clerk and members of the city council of his resignation as city administrator for the City of Plainfield effective September 23, 2013.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other reports from special committees?
Yes, the Public State Committee report was submitted by Councilwoman Rebecca Williams.
Thank you. The floor is now open to any persons wishing to speak on special improvement district budget as advertised in the Courier-News on September 3, 2013. Seeing that, we have a motion to close public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carried. Consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage, consideration of ordinance for adoptions of second reading. Are there any? There is none?
None.
Okay, now we have public comments. The floor is now open for public comments limited to resolutions, motions and ordinance to be introduced on first reading. Please be advised that a total time of 30 minutes will be allotted to permit residents of the public to comment on resolutions and motions considered this evening. Each speaker will be permitted a maximum time limit of three minutes to comment. Members of the public may speak once during this segment of the meeting, appearing under resolutions and motions. The time allotted on each item is non cumulative. Extension of three minutes of a three minute time limit will be granted only at the discretion of the city council president or upon the majority vote of the members present. The floor is now open for resolution number.
Hi, Mr. Xavier from 1447 Francis Lane. I went to City Hall this morning and, uh...
Could you use the mic?
Please use the mic. Went to City Hall this morning. I took pictures of Francis Lane. I got a petition about the potholes.
Council President, this comment is specifically for items that are on the agenda.
You can save that for the end of the meeting. This is just for items on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I have it on.
Your name and address.
Richard Spicer, 1457 Francis Lane. This is pertaining to Resolution 101 dash 13. Yeah, I went to the planning board last week to find out about the conditions of the roads, what happens.
So you say 101 dash 13?
Yes. Resolution authorized directly to finance. This is a plan field to acquire lots of finance for it for the approval.
Is that the agenda?
If I have.
Okay, what?
Say 101?
R. 101 dash 13.
I think that's from last week.
Yes.
Keep coming, Reed, for home.
Monday. I'll just wait for...I'll just wait. It's like the public.
What do you mean? I hope this is working. Is it working?
No.
No. I don't know how to make it work. Just... Daddy, if you count the 14 minutes, I'll vote. I am here to ask that you vote unanimously to approve Resolution Number, whatever it is. I'm sorry, I'll have to find it. I'm getting the gentleman. 358 dash 13, which you will find on page five. There's been some slack, as I understand it, from a couple of local clerks who paid for reading recently, which I'm sure it was a difficulty since I could not have questioned, to urge the council to approve JFK's plan for rezoning and putting in 600 apartments on the Muhlenberg property. As far as I know, that plan has never been submitted either to the council or to the planning boards, and that property is now zoned for medical use. At the agenda fixing session last week, R. 358 13 passed, and this authorizes the award of a professional services contract to an independent planning consultant for the city to look at the Muhlenberg tract and make recommendations to the city as to what the appropriate usage was. And it is my earnest hope that the council will vote unanimously to approve that resolution. We have a choice, and it's a critical choice for the future of this city, and that is to let companies, corporations, do whatever they want, or to consider the best needs of the City of Plainfield and its citizens first. If hiring an independent consultant to look at the Muhlenberg property and make some evaluative and objective professional judgments as to what the best use is, if that is not approved, what remains on the table is solely JFK's proposal, which hasn't even been formally submitted yet. I would urge you very, very strongly to pass this resolution so that the city could have its own planner look at it, a planner that the city has hired who has no connection with JFK at all, to take an honest and objective look at the property and make some recommendations to the city as to best use and how to go about it. I think this is really critical. I think you're at a critical juncture in the history of Plainfield where you can either lie down and let the other guys walk over you, or you can stand up and say, hey, we are going to make a decision, and we're going to make a decision in behalf of the community and its citizens. And this is the first step toward doing that. If you don't pass this and you don't hire an independent planner, what you're left with is what JFK wants. Now, listen, you can have whatever feelings you have about JFK as a hospital. I know that there are serious problems in the emergency room, but I wouldn't trade that for 600 apartments in the middle of a quiet residential neighborhood in the city. The justification that their plan had gave was that since the population of Plainfield is approximately the same as the population of New Brunswick, this would be great in New Brunswick, so it would be great in Plainfield. Well, New Brunswick has Johnson &amp; Johnson. New Brunswick has one seat, train ride into Manhattan. New Brunswick has all the county offices and the county courthouse. New Brunswick has Rutgers University, let's not forget that, and New Brunswick has two Hampton Two hospitals. Now, I quite agree in the abstract that what would be good for New Brunswick would be good for Plainfield, but we don't have those ingredients. And what we need is an independent look at the property to make a recommendation to the council and the planning board as to what ought to be done. And thank you for letting me run over time. Thank you.
William Michelson, 556 Belvedere Avenue. Most of you know me. I'm a planner. I'm a lawyer. I'm a former planning board member who had a whole lot to do with the current master plan and land use ordinance, and I'm currently a historic preservation commissioner here. And I also want to talk on 358 dash 13, the Muhlenberg property. First, the firm that is proposed, higher and rule, I've got no problem with them. I've dealt with them before. I respect them absolutely fine. So I would say, yes, the ordinance should be, the resolution should be passed. Now, I'm one of the diehards who doesn't accept it yet that we had to lose our hospital in the first place, and I don't really know, is it really too late? But I'll tell you why I wonder. For a number of years, I worked for a law firm that represented hospitals. I was counsel to five hospitals, and that's 20 years ago. Today, the whole landscape has changed. All these nonprofit hospitals have been sucked up one by one by for profit chains, and they're still doing it. I just saw one in the paper maybe two or three weeks ago about one of the hospitals in Hudson County. So I don't really want to assume that just because Muhlenberg has been closed for five years that that's a debt issue. There are other chains that are interested. The reason it hasn't happened is the JFK health systems, formerly Solaris, managed to get itself into such a debt position that they're just desperate to recoup their losses and to pay off their mortgages. I don't care that they over encumbered their property. Now, onto the land use part of this. I am afraid that an elaborate trick is being played on this council, and I want to tell you about it. When a landowner decides that the zoning of their property is not what they want it to be anymore, there's two things to do. The city can decide ahead of time, oh, well, let's make it easy for them, and decide to rezone the property their way, even though there's no application pending, to build anything. The other is, the property owner can file an application with the planning division, just like any other, for the rezoning of the property. It might also be phrased as a, uh, an application for a use variance, which perhaps is more familiar to you. But at the moment, as I understand it, JFK hasn't applied for anything. They are hoping that you will do their dirty work for them so that the legal standard of review for what happens when we get these apartments we don't need will not be their problem. So we're going to need the planning firm one way or the other, because I do believe an independent planner that's outside City Hall, not the planning division, would have a lot more freedom to act and to speak. But I don't want this council to do anything for JFK. Make them file an application like any other landowner for whatever it is that they want to build, and frankly, make them fight for it, even if they finally convince us that we've got to let them do something different with most of their land. That's the only way we're ever going to get a reasonable quid pro quo out of JFK. Now, if I look just at the neighborhood and just at the proposal that, it's nebulous. I've never seen it written up with, what is it, 600 quote luxury apartments or something? What do we need that for? When I did the master plan here, we had hearings, and we had people from all parts of the city coming and telling us, the planning board, may I continue briefly? Thank you, that they want the residential densities in this town to go down, not up, just for starters. Just for starters, that way there's no new schoolchildren coming in that we have to try to educate. That neighborhood is not downtown. That neighborhood is not one where increasing the current population serves any good purpose for anybody, except that some of the people on the board of directors at JFK who managed to dig themselves into this hole and are trying to take us down with it. So go ahead and hire the planning firm, but I don't think they should actually do anything yet. When an application comes in that the planning board should hear, not the council, that's when the planning firm will be useful. Eventually, it's going to come back to this council, but by then we'll have a full record, a lot more detail to discuss. So I just wanted you to understand all that before you set the planning firm loose. Loose on what? Mostly, that's got to wait a while.
Johnny Pritchard, 723 Arlington Avenue. All I'm asking you to do at this time is not to let JFK trick you into doing their dirty work for them. Why should we need an apartment complex on the property of the Muhlenberg Hospital? We need a hospital, not more apartment buildings on that site. I'll get into it later on when I speak later. Thank you.
Harold Jimenez, 352 Bishop Road. I too want to support the resolution, I think it's 358 dash 13, and, you know, it's been five years since nobody in this administration or in the council itself has forced any positive action to remedy the loss of our hospital. You have a chance now to do something about a productive use of that property and not something which is not going to be of any asset to Plainfield, and I think it's just a by the sky dream of apartment houses than a mall at that location. It's not going to bring people into the city. Maybe the transit village will, if it's ever established, certainly in Cranford, it's doing a tremendous building of apartments around the railroad station there. And again, we are years too late. We've been five years since in the doldrum. We announce have a chance to be proactive. Let's do it.
Thank you.
Madam President, Council, John Campbell, 1404 Highland Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Good evening. Just to reiterate my comments from last week, I would urge you to strongly consider voting against this study. I just feel as though, you know, to echo some of the comments I heard earlier today, that JFK is, you know, JFK will use this to get these 600 apartments, and, you know, people who come, I see people coming in my real estate profession from New York City making the exodus over here, they're not coming to, they're not going, they don't want to go from apartment to apartment. They're going from apartment in New York City to tree line streets, to residential, residentially zoned areas here. I know a lot of people invested in the Muhlenberg area because of the hospital, you know, because of the beautiful residential neighborhood, and it's important that we preserve that. So I would urge you to reconsider this study. You know, I can tell you the highest and best use for that campus is a full service medical care facility. I think that if we aggressively marketed it, if we put pressure on JFK to aggressively market it, then we could find a buyer. You know, I never saw a for sale sign on the property on the campus. You know, I know people who have shown interest, but, you know, they go to no avail, you know, wouldn't get any information. So urge you to strongly reconsider that. Thank you, guys.
Hi. My name is Michelle Pleck. I live at 1132 Stillford Avenue in Plainfield. My home is 10 houses from the hospital. My kids are zoned for Evergreen School. We cannot go to Evergreen School. It is filled to the max. We have to go to Cook. Other people have to go to Woodland. We don't get any bus service. I don't qualify for busing. I have seen a change in the neighborhood. There's more rentals. I urge you to reconsider allowing this to be rezoned for 600 apartments. We don't get the services now for our children that we deserve for our tax money. It's not going to work. Thank you. Love.
Good evening. Tony Rucker, 25 Berkeley Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Yeah, I, um, have been following the advancements of considering this proposal for those units. I think that, obviously, we're at a point where we're going to have a new administration coming in, and I think it makes sense, particularly since we have a transit oriented development strategy, to take into consideration comprehensively what it would mean for the city. If you look at the number of units right now currently that are for sale in the city, if you look at what that would mean to the actual cost of your house, because the more people, the more you bring on the market, it's just going to diminishing, it's going to diminish your house value as well, because we're going to bring new units on. And the thing that I particularly love about developers is that they never consider the actual impact, the cost per unit associated with these units. Each child that we send to our public schools run, I think, between $13,000, $14,000 a year. If you look at the calculus as far as what it's going to return to us, and we look at hospital services and things like that, and just medical services, that does what is an accident the other day where a baby was in the back of the car, got an accident, the mother was, had open heart surgery. It took the paramedics 30 minutes to get there, 30 minutes, and that was the, and the police took 25 minutes. So, actually 15. But my point is, is that we have to look at how these services impact the city as a whole, and I think, let the new administration come in and look at it from a comprehensive point of view, because I think it's a fork in the road for us. That's one of the last open development places that we can develop. We've got to get that right, and as other people have mentioned, if we don't, the impact on schools, the impact on services, you know, it's just not, it's not a good time to do this without considering everything else that's going on in the city. So I hope, you know, pause for cause and make it part of the entire plan that I'm questioning the new administration will have for.
Delos Damaran, 127 Netherwood Avenue in Plainfield. My mind goes back to 2005 when I first came here, and my father, he had a brain injury. He fell in the street and had a brain injury here in Plainfield, and he laid there in that street for, oh, I guess about 30 minutes to almost 45 minutes waiting on the paramedics to come. At that time, we didn't even have an ambulance here. You only had the rescue squad, and today, we still have the same thing. But thanks God that some, that the rescue squad did come and take him to Muhlenberg. Even though my father died later that year, I really believe that it is really, we really need a hospital here. To have people that constantly be shot, have medevac here, taken there, and everywhere, is unacceptable. A city of this size, the demographics that's constantly changing, can we really handle a disaster if one comes? I don't think so. So I'm asking the council today to please consider this resolution and pass it, because we cannot afford to have any more tragedies here in Plainfield. It is important, it's important, it's important. I cannot stress that enough. People, just last week, within the last couple of weeks, we had, what, three shootings here in Plainfield. One lady was shot, one was fatal, and then we had, you know, someone had to be medevaced. You know, it's, that shouldn't be. We need to really do something. This city, in the last eight years, I have watched it just decline in a spiraling way. It's going down, 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 and it's not, it's not, it's not good, because we are tax paying people. And when we pay our taxes, we pay them so that we can benefit from the services that this city has to offer. And so, again, council, please, please, all of these comments that you have heard tonight, we need this study. We don't need JFK coming in and telling us what to do, and I'm appalled at the fact that they want to do that. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, council members. Carol Proco, Bowles, 1049 Field Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. I reiterate everything that's been said before. I want you to seriously consider passing 358 13 for two reasons. One is, I think we do need an independent evaluation of what is the best use of that current property. Secondly, because I do believe that we do need a medical facility there if possible. I think we need to have an intelligent outside evaluation of what we can do with that property. And I think it'd be a big mistake to have JFK dictate to us what's going to happen there. As you know, we have a lot of high density buildings in Plainfield already, and so to add to that only adds to a number of issues we already have with high density. So I urge you to please vote for 358 13. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more comments? Seeing that?
Seeing no further comments, I move to close the public hearing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carried.
All members, I would ask for a consideration to be rescinded and not controversial by the city council, who will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless the council member or citizen requests, in which it meant the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately on the new business in its normal sequence, lead on agenda.
Madam President, all of those resolutions listed on this evening's considered agenda, which are identified as R. 347 dash 13 through R. 354 dash 13, and R. 359 dash 13 through R. 361 dash 13, and move for adoption. I need a second?
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions, motion carries.
Madam President, and members of the council, I hereby introduce Resolution R. 340 dash 13, authorizing a person to person transfer of a retail distribution liquor license for 2012, 44, 015, 03, from the Pryon Inc., trading at Wright House. This is located at 128 Taro Road to Hennessy. Madam President, and members of the council, I hereby introduce Resolution R340-13, authorizing a person-to-person transfer of a retail distribution liquor license for 2012-44-015-03 from the Cryon Inc., trading as Ry House. This is located at 128 Terrill Road to Henner Pujak LLC, which will also be trading as Ry House Spirits, and move for its adoption. Do I have a note here that someone would like to table this, that administration?
Yes. Chairman Reed, we request to table this resolution due to publication requirements.
Yes, so I need a motion to table this resolution. Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Therefore, I hereby introduce Resolution R341-13, which is honoring and congratulating Reverend Donald D. Whitnichols Sr. on the occasion of his 90th birthday celebration and move for his adoption. I need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R342-13, directing the planning board to review the noise ordinance and make recommendation to the city council and move for its adoption. Need a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R343, which authorize the waiver of late fees assessed against the
What's the name of that?
Bahima Child Care Center and the Muslim Community Soup Kitchen for a health license and move for its adoption.
Madam Council President, I ask to make the recommendation that the, there be a motion to amend this resolution to remove Bahima's Child Care Center that was added in error, and the waiver of late fees is only applicable to Muslim Community Soup Kitchen.
Okay, I need a motion to amend the resolution as so stated by recommended by our council.
Show move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Now I need a motion to authorize Resolution R343-13 as amended, which authorize late fee assessed against the Muslim Community Soup Kitchen for a health license and move for its adoption.
Show move. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Did you do that right, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you. I hereby introduce Resolution R344-13, which authorize the intergovernmental transfer of firefighter Jason Kathy and granting a waiver of the residence requirements and move for its adoption. Need a second.
Second.
Madam Roll call? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Reeves?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
I hereby introduce Resolution R345-13, which authorize an appropriation to Alamo and Renaud in the amount not to exceed $15,000 and move for its adoption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R346-13, authorizing approval to amend the budget 2013 by inserting special items of revenue and appropriations and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R355-13 for a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department of Transportation for the fiscal year 2014 New Jersey Department of Transportation Trust Fund for the resurfacing of East Second Street from Terrill Road to Plainfield Avenue, and I move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R356, authorizing an increase in contract awards to the CHS Construction Group in the amount not to exceed $2,700 for a total amount not to exceed $16,350 to complete the destruction of the property located at 326 Leaven Avenue and move for its adoption.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
I hereby introduce Resolution R357-13, authorizing the adoption of the fiscal year 2014 operating budget for the Plainfield Special Improvement District Management Corporation in the amount of $217,375 and move this adoption.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Okay.
And second.
Chairman Reed, Council President, I would request to call Councilman Matt to do this portion so he can be present during his roll call. Can I have a brief second to give him a call? For Resolution 358-13. So before you read that, I request that I give him a call so he can be part of this.
Is that in order, Mr.?
That's in, that's absolutely necessary.
Madam President, if you are pleased that these are not answering, may I move on with this resolution and, uh... I hereby introduce Resolution R358, which authorize the award of a professional service contract to the hired bureau and associate as a planning consultant for the city of Plainfield for the Muhlenberg Track Study in an amount not to exceed $48,000 and move for its adoption. I need a second.
Second.
All those, Madam Roll call?
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
The resolution is adopted. Thank you.
Madam President, I offer the accompanying resolution identified as R362-13, which authorize a street and sidewalk encroachment to the Plainfield High School to conduct a homecoming parade on November 2nd, which was not set forth in the agenda fixing of October 7th to be added to the agenda for consideration.
Second.
Now, Mr. Counsel, we normally need five today.
We need five. When she says...
Yes.
November 2nd, we don't meet prior to that, right?
No. That's perfect.
So since we do not have five, how do we handle this?
The motion fails.
The motion fails.
The item cannot be added to the agenda.
What was that again?
The item cannot be added. Council President is correct. Five votes are needed.
I don't know. Homecoming parade.
Now, what about the November 2nd for the Plainfield High School homecoming? Will we have an opportunity to consider that at any other time prior to November 2nd?
The only recommendation I could make is if we could possibly get Councilman Matt on the phone, that might
Try it again.
Might change the vote.
I'd like to go to Paul again and see if we can call him out.
Bear with us for a while, ladies and gentlemen, because this is a homecoming parade for our Plainfield High School, so we do need this prior to November 2nd.
Mr. Starch, uh, Mr. Starch, we have considered all of the resolutions, and we're down to new items, which is needed to be voted on to accept it on the agenda tonight since it was not considered in the agenda fixing session, is R362-13, which authorize a street and sidewalk encroachment to the Plainfield High School to conduct a homecoming parade on November 2nd, which was not set forth in the agenda fixing section of October 7th. And if this is to add it to the agenda for consideration. Uh, just one thing I'd like to know before we do that, what streets are they talking about closing? You know, anyone have that information?
I need a second, please.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please? Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
I just had a decision.
Okay, I hereby call Resolution R362-13 and hereby introduce Resolution 362-13 and move for its adoption. I need a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Madam President, under introduction of artists on the first reading, I introduce the accompanying artists and identified as MC 2013-9, which is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 13 Streets and Sidewalks, Article 6, Encroachments on Streets and Sidewalks, Section 13, Colon 6, Dash 1 of the Nispokole of the city of Plainfield, 1971, and request that the title be read by the clerk.
The court starts first with the reading of this sentence.
Okay, I move that the artist be adopted on the first reading, and if adopted, that the clerk shall advertise this artist as required by law, and that the second reading of said artist shall be held on, held at a regular meeting here at 325 Watchong Avenue on Monday, November 12 at 8:00 PM, assumed thereafter as the matter can be heard.
Second.
Madam Court, can I have a roll call?
Councilwoman Brown?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Storch?
Yes.
Chairman Reed?
Yes.
Council President Rivers?
Yes.
I turn it over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. We have now come to the general public comment segment of tonight's meeting. Any resident or taxpayer of Plainfield is welcome to comment on any governmental item of concern to them during this general public comment segment of the council's meeting. Citizens must clearly state their name and address to the clerk. Once the speaker is recognized by the presiding officer to speak, a total of 60 minutes have been allocated for all public comments to be presented. Large groups are urged to select a spokesperson to represent them. Each person is allocated five minutes to speak. The presiding officer or majority of the council may extend the length of time allocated or cumulative on each individual. It is not a question-and-answer period. Neither the presiding officer nor council members will engage in a back-and-forth exchange, so speakers are encouraged to present all their views. The presiding officer as well as any council member may respond to any comment after such speaker is finished. The presiding officer may refer the speaker to the city administrator or an appropriate department head, and any council members may choose to respond in writing to individual citizens. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President. I'm Jacques Howard. I live at 1238 Lansdowne Terrace, Plainfield, New Jersey, 07-07. Is it closed? A little louder? Did you hear that? Can you hear that?
I hear you, but they can't.
Okay, once again, Jacques Howard, City of Plainfield, 1238 Lansdowne Terrace. Madam President, good evening. First, I'd like to extend my condolences to Madam Reeves, Councilwoman Reeves, and I'd just like to read my following statement, which is, "I wish to thank the administration and legislative body for its past and present support of the many projects initiated by the Office of Economic Development. As you know, public service is a privilege, and I remain grateful for that opportunity. Over the years, we have addressed the challenges and demands of the market with comprehensive and incremental initiatives, leveraging our resources to create and develop innovative partnerships and policies that have both served the residents of the city of Plainfield and gained respect of local county and state governments beyond New Jersey. Again, I thank you for this privilege, and I wish you all very well. Thank you."
Thank you. I wish you luck to, uh, Mr. Howard. Thanks for your sentence.
John E. Pritchard, 723 Arlington Avenue, Plainfield, New Jersey. Members of the council, two things I'd like to bring to your attention. First, I urge the city council to pass a resolution that would support our military personnel, Army, Navy, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, and Air Force. Some of the Plainfield sons are in the services now, and they are risking their lives to defend our freedom, especially those in Afghanistan. Let's not fall into that anti-GI trap we went to when we, during the war in Vietnam. And in honor of those that died in Vietnam, especially those 16 men from our hometown, with your permission, I'd like to sing. They loved us so. Every day in a hundred ways, they told us so. In honesty, in affection, they told us so. They loved us so. Every day in a hundred ways, they showed us so. With loyalty and bravery, they showed us so. They were defenders, and they kept us free. They took it all to guard us and fought for liberty. They loved us so. And we should know. For we loved them so. Secondly, and lastly, this is about Muhlenberg. I have here an article titled "Rucker's New Medical Stomach Field Aims to Put Fear in Practice." What I'm trying to say is this, we do not need an apartment complex at the Muhlenberg campus. We do not need that, and we do not need it at any time. We need a hospital, and we need it ASAP, and we need it badly. What good is an apartment complex in the, in the Muhlenberg complex? Don't fall into JFK's trap. Don't let him, don't let him shove you over a barrel, over the falls. It's time we made JFK lay square eggs. I said that time and time and time again. We need a hospital, a full-service one. We need a hospital that is capable of mission, just like we need a police department that's capable of mission, a fire department that's capable of mission, rescue squads and EMS is capable of mission. We need a hospital that's capable of mission so that lives can be saved. And I'm not talking about head colds or ear aches. I'm talking about many people's lives. And let's, let's get one thing straight, ladies and gentlemen. The sooner we end the Muhlenberg, the better all we all will be. Do I make myself clear?
Yes.
My name is Deborah Dow. I live at 812 Central Street, and I have a suggestion. Over the last five years, I've been putting a lot of stuff on the internet, and people have been contacting me. Over the last five years, I've been putting a lot of stuff on the internet, and people have been contacting me, asking me, can they come work here, can they invest here? I even had a medical school from the University of Cairo contact me on Facebook and said they had American doctors that they had educated, and that was before they had all that trouble in Egypt. And I'm sure that a lot of doctors would love to come here now. I've also heard from doctors without borders. Apparently, a lot of people my age went into relief work and are getting a little old and are looking for someplace to retire. And Plainfield would be like paradise after you've been with doctors without borders. So I just wanted to tell you that I know of two separate medical groups and individuals that tried to buy the hospital, that went to Kane Brothers, signed the confidentiality agreements, and were discouraged. And one of them is Dr. Eric Braverman, who is Governor Patterson of New York's personal physician. Ben Vereen, he's a celebrity addiction doctor. He does weight loss, wellness. He has a Park Avenue practice. And he was discouraged. And I'm saying, we should ask them for a list of everybody who tried to buy the hospital. Even if they didn't think they were qualified to run a hospital, we need services. And we need services from like highly qualified people who will really care for us. Now, if they won't give us those names, then that says something about intent. And I was talking to an IT person today, and we're willing to set up an information portal on the internet to invite people to come here and provide us services. And if they can't do it in the Muhlenberg building, there's lots of buildings all over town. There are other spaces that can be put to this use. But there are primary care physicians who would come here. Many of them are not young, they're not right out of medical school. But they would come here if we opened up to them. And I think the first person we should invite after this guy should be Dr. Lauer, who made us the number one heart and stroke hospital in the state of New Jersey and has been hired by the governor of Arizona for a five-year contract. So that should be running out right about now. And I think we should try to reach out to people who would be magnet doctors and make people want to come here, you know? If you look at the court appeal, it says that we have a large federally funded health center with five locations in town. And that's the same thing that was said by the commissioner's office in her report. We have a health center that was closed for close to three weeks during Hurricane Sandy. So people think we have more health services on the record than we actually have. So I think we should raise that discrepancy and make sure that state of New Jersey and the State Health Planning Board take a serious look at what we need. Now, one of the members of the State Health Planning Board came here to a forum at the library and said that the hospital is an old model, and we need to get over it. Well, nobody has brought us the new model, okay? So I'm saying, let's let people know we're open for the new model. And we're open for you to come here and provide us with services. Just so we don't preclude anybody from having a hospital, we don't have to start with a hospital. Thank you.
Just old Harold did 1353 Cushing Road. There was one resolution which you acted upon, but I did not have time to speak about prior to that, and that's the repave of East Second Street. I think that is a technical error because I do not believe that East Second Street extends to Plainfield Avenue. That from Park Avenue East, West, Park Avenue West, it must be West Second Street. So that is corrected. South Second Street is on the south side of the railroad tracks. The other thing I want to, I'd like some information on or correction. Last, last Monday, at the Agenda Fixing Session meeting, I reported the Chartering Commission's group's report in which there were a bunch of recommendations made, which I think the council sort of accepted. However, I believe there was mention to be made that according to law, these changes had to be done by the legislature, by the initiative in the Assembly. And there was supposed to be a resolution, I saw, requesting our Assemblymen to introduce those changes so that they could be enacted on ASAP. I may be wrong, but I believe that was what gentleman asked. Thank you. I ask the clerk to not bend and not check that.
Thank you, Council President. Just to address Dr. Uswor. That is correct. In fact, there will be a resolution coming forward. However, it was my understanding from the last meeting that the Chartering Study Commission wishes to do additional amendments, which they are entitled to do. And I believe it's the will of the council, let that amendment process play out. When the final product comes forward, there'll be a resolution requesting that the Assemblymen move the matter to the state legislature.
Thank you.
Johnny Lee Calp again. Court 14 Randolph Room still. I just want to thank Councilors Greaves and Reed and Rivers and Brown for approving that resolution. Speak up, please. For approval to approve that resolution to hire an independent planner to look at the Muhlenberg property. I think that is a tremendous step forward, and I congratulate and thank the four of you.
Good evening, Madam President and council members. A little challenged here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, my name is Gillette Riley, and I'm with Legal Shield. And I do not live in Plainfield, but I do operate a business out of 320 Park Avenue here in Plainfield. And I don't know if this is the appropriate time to reach this, but I pardon my ignorance of the process if it is not. But I, I know that we have been dealing with Legal Shield and adopting it as an employee benefit for the city of Plainfield employees. And had gone back and forth with the, you know, with the city itself, with the mayor, and had implemented sort of, I guess, in passe, to allow us to go in and do a, an employee appreciation day, where we were able to obtain applications from several individuals that were interested in the service and needed it immediately. In fact, I have those applications here, those that did acquire, that David did not just acquire, but signed up. And I didn't know if this was the appropriate time to find out when and if a resolution could be entered on behalf of the employees. I don't speak on behalf of myself. I'm not doing it selfishly. But on the behalf of those who are in desperate need of the service, who have issues that they're dealing with, and it's been over a month, and I just wanted an opportunity to be able to service those people. I didn't know if this, again, was the opportunity since I didn't see the resolution on the agenda.
Ms. Riley, I'll speak for the council. The council did have an opportunity to review this matter in closed session. And although the council certainly would like to, you know, make sure that, you know, if individuals within the city, you know, the city's employment would like to use Legal Shield, they're certainly willing to, you know, they're, that is available to them. However, the city did not want to allow this to go through the payroll system. So certainly, any employee who wishes to take advantage of the service that you provide is certainly available to them. However, the, the city did not want to use our payroll system as a sort of a collection agent for Legal Shield, for lack of a better term. So unfortunately, at this time, we don't want to pursue payroll. And that, if I accurately, I hope I've accurately displayed the will of the council this time.
Well, certainly, and I do appreciate the input. Excuse me, no, back forth. If you can talk to her.
Certainly, we'll have an opportunity to speak.
Okay, I was going to say, so there will be an opportunity for me to at least address the issue with respect to the payroll?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We can talk more anytime after the meeting.
I do appreciate it. Thank you. And thank you. Yeah.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is James Turpin. I live at 808 East Second Street, Plainfield. The reason I'm here on this evening is because of growing concern of mine as to the parking that is being done on the 800 block of East Second Street. The parking is on both sides of the street, is obstructing the driveways of the residents because the apartment complex across the street from us watch on gardens. I understand charges extra to the people that are already in there for parking. So now they're parking on the city streets. I've had a number of close calls coming out of my driveway due to the fact that I cannot see to get out the driveway, and I'm pulling out. I don't back out the driveway. And now I've had to call the police authorities on numerous occasions. They've ticketed vehicles because they've been covering my apron. And, you know, it's just getting precarious, and the people that park there. And, you know, I like to live and let live. I'm not trying to, you know, knock anybody, but they park there and they allow refuse to fall out of their vehicles on the ground. They leave there. Just today, coming home, I see where the people on the, in the apartment complex have put the leaves out on the street. And now they're parking on top of the leaves. And that is dangerous because they can start a fire. You know, and I, I just wonder if somebody is aware of this other than myself and my family. You know, there's commercial vehicles parked on the street, and there shouldn't be commercial vehicles parked on the street overnight. You know, and, you know, it's, you know, I, I believe that the Plainfield Police Department has more to do than come down and put tickets on cars that are covering the apron on driveway. But I have to call them because sometimes the people just, you know, they don't understand. Anytime you make it difficult for me to exit my driveway, I got to pull almost across the street to go in either direction. And then one, one day, the fire truck was coming down East Second Street on a call. The bus, the 59, was going up the other side. And one had to pull over and stop in order for the other one to get past. You know, this is becoming more dangerous and more dangerous. I just hope that someone would do something about it, you know, because Plainfield is a good place to live. I've been in Plainfield all my life. I'm 71 years old. You know, this is my city, and I just hope that somebody will look into this. Thank you.
Would that be helpful to you?
Thank you.
My name is Terrence Bellamy, 723 East Seventh Street, Plainfield, 40-year resident. I come to the council asking a question about Silas Field. I'm a youth football coach for the Pop Warner, and the field is pretty much in shambles. Well, the field and the concession stand area, there's no way we can cook inside the concession stand because there's, the gas line is cut off. I'm just, I'm coming to ask a question. What is the future of Pop Warner, well, excuse me, what is the future of Silas Field? Was, what, if anyone has actually taken a look at the concession stand and the bathrooms? Because they're, they're pretty much, I would say, in the same position that they've been in since I played football at Silas Field, which was 1970-something, something. I am a true believer in children first, and we want the best for our children. So I come to the city council just to inform you to take a look, perhaps might take a look at Silas Field, and see if we can do something about it. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Can I be asked again?
If you want to, I'm not sure.
We will serve the man in this.
Someone will be getting back. Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm in 1350 Center Avenue. I just want to take the opportunity to thank the council, to thank Corporation Council for responding to my letter so quickly, and thank the council for voting to waive the fee for the soup kitchen so that we may continue. Serva kine. Thank you so very much.
Good luck. Good luck.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sandra Taylor Williams. I live at 312 New Street here in Plainfield. I have some petitions here. I was advocating for JFK until I found out last week that they lied to me, or they didn't tell me the whole truth. I have some petitions here that I walked up and down the street, Park Avenue, Front Street, both sides, had people sign, because I had to sign on the saying, "Save our hospital," not knowing what was what until last week. So I, I was thinking about tearing them up here on TV, but I spoke to someone else, and they said, "No, hold it because we don't know the outcome of what's going to happen with the hospital." So I just want council to know, I have petitions, I have 26 pages with about 12 lines on each page of petitions that people have signed trying to get our hospital back. So in case you might need for a future reference or whatever, I'll just hold on to them. Now, I have another problem. I was coming out of my house, who was today, Tuesday, I think it was Saturday. The house next door to me is vacant. It's been vacant over three years. Looking alongside the base of the house was two rats. Not only do we have administration problems and city problems, now we have rat infestation. I went to City Hall, no, this, at Thursday or Friday. I went to City Hall to ask them about giving me some rat poison to put down for these rats. Now, we have had, what did they call them, people who sneak into houses that squatters, squatters, come next door, quite a few. About seven or eight times a year, the police have to come escort them out. Sometimes they lock them up or whatever. But when they leave, they leave a mess. On the front lawn of the house next door to me is a corn cob this long where the rats done ate cups, from cup of soup and so forth, just jumped all over the yard. Now, I went to City Hall to ask them for some rat poison to put down, and they refused me. Now, like I told them, if I've got to buy rat poison out of my money, it's coming out of the taxes. Those are not my rats. I didn't call for them. The squatters leave everything laying over there at the house, and they eat it, and now it's terrible. It's really bad. They just run like they're crazy. I've heard rats in my house. I do not need rats. So I said, "Well, I will bring the matter to the city council, let the council decide what to do." Because I, I went on every floor in City Hall to ask them for rat poison. They couldn't tell me what to do. Now, like I said, if you have rats here in the building, doesn't somebody put down rat poison? So why can't we get rat poison if it's not our rats, if not my rats, in rats next door? And it's ridiculous. Something has to be done. Now, I also want to make a comment about the city administration and the council. I hope you guys have settled your differences amongst yourselves, and I hope administration over here with David has straightened up because I didn't appreciate the way he acted a couple of weeks ago to Reverend Thomas. I understand he doesn't live in Plainfield, but you take our money back to your town and do with it what you want. So whether you go to church or don't go to church, if you have a priest, a rabbi, a father, a pastor, or whatever, I know you must respect him. Because you didn't respect our pastor here in Plainfield. Thank you very much. Have a good day.
I want to thank the council for passing the resolution about having an independent planner come on board and, and take a look and have a public meeting. I have a lot of information, so if that gentleman would like to contact me, I'd be happy to let him know what I know. One of my concerns on the property, and I know it's addressed in the RFP for this planner, was that historic buildings that are located there, the Everts Tracy Buildings, Attorney Pavilion and the Operating Pavilion. There's probably the oldest standalone operating pavilion in the United States. I know probably in New Jersey, but probably in the United States. Um and Everts Tracy is a um an architect that what lived, grew up in Plainfield. He uh lives on Hillside Avenue, designed those buildings and a lot of his buildings are on the National Register for Historic Places. Uh my other concern about that property is that most people aren't aware that there is a cell tower on the hospital buildings itself. So that is, that assists us in this community, especially our police department because I believe that that tower helps them um with the dispatches, with the with the um with the radio calls and things like that. So you have to make sure that that is addressed in this whole uh plan. And um six hundred apartments, I mean, I mean, I don't know what JFK is dreaming. I mean, why don't they put six hundred of those apartments in Edison, right on their other property? They own over there on James Street. They have a lot of of property over there. In fact, I think the the temple over there rents rents from that, so why don't they put it in a parking lot? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
From Gonzalez, I would like to, I have two points that are very important. And I'm sorry if I'm a little, I'm a little sick, but I I could not leave this opportunity to question the administration, to question you and to question your safety director. I remember a couple of years ago when he was first coming to this town, he told me that my chief was doing nothing by sitting there and letting my people to be beat up, to be killed, and I said, well, I wonder, where is the safety plan that he presented to all of you and to all of us saying that he's gonna keep the city safe? I wanna know, what are you gonna do when the family come to us as our organization to ask him for help? When a ten-year-old or eight-year-old come and say, what am I gonna do now without my father? What am I gonna do? Sometimes I wanna cry, sometimes I don't know what can I say. That's to say a little boy that could not understand why his father was killed. And I don't understand either, how is it that everybody can live comfortable without knowing that your neighbor or your business person is being beat up or is being assaulted or or something happened to them? Sometimes I just wonder, is only the television come to say, oh, this is the crime, it's nothing else on this town that can be done? Because we have a couple of people that was killed recently. And and really, it's only the television come just to give somebody like, well, be on the television, but that's about it. We're not doing what we're supposed to do to protect our citizens, our business people. What what is the safety plan? And I and I just wonder, is is that we forgot all about being safety because we are in the political moment that we're running for mayor and for whatever and the safety director say, please God, finish this and I don't care about what happened to people? What happened? I wanna know, and I wanna know, where is the neighbors that do not see anything? How can nobody see somebody come and kill kill somebody at the door of the house? Okay, and this not happened twenty years ago. And this administration has been very good, very good, on keep everything under the table. It's no more crime since the mayor come in. No crying at all. Everything is safe, you just always have to be careful. Well, we need to do more than be very careful. And I and I I just, I I don't know, how can I beg you to understand that in order for you to do your job as a councilperson, you represent us. We vote for you, okay? I'm a citizen and I have many citizens that become citizens throughout the program that we started many years ago. Lack have been here since nineteen ninety-five. And we start this program and we make a lot of people become citizens to vote for you to represent us. And it's our obligation to question you, what are you doing for us? That's that's one point. And my other point, in two minutes ago, uh Mr. Alex Tower, I believe, he came to the microphone and he do racist remark against today Hispanic community. The Ecuadorian, the Peruvian, he talk, he talk about the small business, that you should close all these businesses. And at the end, he say that he should put the old Colombia that look like him, the old we had to be put in a box. No one in the city council have said anything. I hear nothing about these remarks and I have it on tape and I have ready to go. I think when a person come to this floor, to this microphone, should not be stopping when a person try to do racist remark. And I telling you why. Because I have been here in this town for thirty-six years. I live here, I live here, I invest everything on this town. And I don't really care about the color, the race, the nationality, or if I speak correctly or if I have an accent, or if I make a mistake when I talk, I don't care. The only thing that I care is I'm a human being. Yes, I'm educated, yes, I went to school all the way, yes, I did, I have many degrees. But what good it is if I could not understand the culture our Hispanics and Latino community have bring to this town? The culture that we have and bring to this town have enriched this country. And then and then one little point in that point. You can go to Jersey City, you can go to Union City, you can go to many towns, including New York, and you can see eh business by business, next door, next door, they say eh different kind of business and they all have plant here. And by the way, the Hispanics are the one that go the most to every single restaurant that we open, to every single business that we open. So I want you to please review that tape and I do expect an statement from all of you and I do expect that no one should ever be allowed to come here and deteriorate the Hispanics and Latino community. We're not, we're not here to be somebody else or we're not here to be put in a box. Because it will, it will take too much for him to put us in a box. So I appreciate that you look hard into that point.
Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Ira Presley.
Question for the Public Safety Director. Do we keep crime statistics on victims ethnic and racial backgrounds?
The answer to the question is yes, we do have that information.
Can we get a report so that we can see how this is playing out? I mean, we're hearing some comments and it sounds like there may be a disparity in terms of who the victims are in our city. And it would be very helpful, I think, for the council to see the actual data on this.
I can supply that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ira Presley. I live at twelve Avery Marion Avenue, which is located about three hundred feet from the Muhlenberg campus. And that's why I'm here today, to the city fathers and mothers. I bought my home over thirty-one years ago. I've been at that address. I raised my family there. My children are grown. There are several families that are new to the area, they have young children. One of the reasons, or the main reason why I bought, there was, there was a full-service hospital. You know, children have accidents. I had a child at the age of six, piece of glass, right through her midsection, close to her heart. I was able to run her to the emergency room, run her right there. And her needs were taken care of, the medical professionals were there. They're no longer there. There are several incidents that take place in the city of Plainfield. Muhlenberg is no longer there. They have to go to Island to JFK or into Southern over there. It's not right for the uh residents of Plainfield to have to travel that distance. We've uh we've had people die in transit to the hospitals. I have a a a a problem because we have police officers that serve our city. If they have a serious incident, where do they go? Our fire, firemen and police officers. Do we have a medical facility that can treat them? Or do they have to be transferred? I just pray that, and I pray, that city fathers and mothers will come up with an idea other than six hundred so-called community. Thank you.
I agree.
My name is John Jackson, I live at nine oh nine West Seventh Street, Plainfield. I I notice people making comments, but I don't hear any comments from the council or the representatives before me. I have to find a way to get you to respond to the problems that we have. I don't know what it is, maybe petitions or new delegates taking your seats. I remember gunnies and some of the people in here remember it, and telling things for bad. The gunnies refused to serve black people at all. They refused to live in the showroom after after World War. The problems we had in the South. We live in a ridiculous city. I stuck, I don't see much difference then than I see now. I see a Y in the city of Plainfield that looks like junk, but compared with Scotts Plainfield, it's it's a doghouse. We need to do things. You don't hire the people in your city when you get contractors working here. You come up with all kinds of excuses why you don't do it. There's no excuse. Common sense says we need to run better, put people to work, stop running businesses out, find people who are gonna be in our government that are gonna do this. If we've got money to spend, let's spend it correctly. Let's look out for our citizens. Let's get them out of these jails. Don't put the the uh the burden of your expenses on those poor people that I see full in your courtrooms. Over junk. Ninety-five percent that I see are, that are in jail are people that look like me. We need to stop this. Common sense said we shouldn't allow it to happen. And here we're in a position and we're still letting it happen. Let's get some work here, let's do your jobs and let's answer the comments that people make before you.
My name is Ronald Tillman. I live at fourteen fifty-four Shirley Street in Plainfield, New Jersey. I um I'm a member of uh Plainfield Pop Warner Vikings. I'm a Vikings coach. I've been coaching Pop Warner for over fifteen years. My issue is the uh the field condition of Silas Field. Okay, um as long as I've been coaching, I played football, eh it's an eyesore. It's ridiculous that when towns come to this city, that they they, it's just completely disrespectful. The field is atrocious, the the clubhouse is atrocious, the concession stand is even more atrocious. You serving food in a place that's probably not even fit to even do that. And then you have towns that come here year in and year out. They look at us as the laughing stock of Union County. It's a shame. There is no reason for a city, a a proud city, I should say, if you wanna call it that, for us to be the laughing stock of Union County. Everyone else can put back into the youth in order for them to succeed. You wanna know why the streets are under pressure right now? It's because the council is not held accountable to find ways to get these kids motivated to wanna represent their city. And then the kids that want to do have to battle with gangs and and things that are unbecoming. I raised four children in this city. My youngest is ten years old. She comes to me and asks me, Daddy, why does our field look like this? What am I to answer? How am I to answer that? I come to you as a council to find out, who do we come to to talk to about certain things when it comes down to the recreation department for the city of Plainfield? If these kids don't have an outlet, where, what are they supposed to do? Do you want the murder rate to climb and keep climbing? That's what's gonna happen because they have no outlet. You got some kids that live down on South Second or the West End that have never crossed Park Avenue and don't understand that people can have aspirations and do whatever they wanna do, but it starts at an early age. Five years old, they're wondering, why can't I be like that? We can go to Freehold, we can go to Monalupin, we can go to Red Bank, we can go to Woodbridge, we can go to Island, even Roselle. Everywhere else their facility, it is a facility. Ours, you might as well call it the dog pound. And that's disgusting. It's very disgusting. And when I played semi-pro football on Silas Field, I blew my knee out. Why? Because the ground was atrocious. Ended my career. And I come in front of you tonight to understand or ask, how is it that, or can we come together? You have two organizations, you have tons of children that want to be a part of something. I don't care if it's soccer, if it's football, if it's basketball, that is what makes the city what it is. Yeah, you can have political government, you can do whatever you wanna do, but if the kids don't have any motivation, they are not going to go anywhere. You don't even have people wanting to come into our city to see what our kids are about. Why? Because we're the laughing stock of Union County and it's a shame. I moved here eight years ago because it was a chocolate city. It was a place where if you wanted to find out how good you were, this is where you go. Everywhere else, they have succeeded and superseded us and we still sitting here like a gerbil in a geranium just spinning our wheels going nowhere. Let all the garbage be set aside and think about our kids and be accountable for the seats that you hold. Because those young kids are gonna be voters one day. And if they can't vote on the right thing, then what is it about? We're all gonna be gone. Before it's over, you're gonna be gone. There is no time to say, oh, well, I messed up. We say in football, it's no time to say it was my bad. Step up, play hard or go home, that's what you gotta do. So if you got a job, please do your job, but think about those kids that you see walking down Park Avenue when they get out of school. State championship material walking down, walking down Park Avenue. They don't wanna be a part of nothing but not something that's not good. They're sitting up there robbing, stealing and doing whatever they wanna do or trying to get some little girl knocked up because that's the thing to do. Get them off the computers, put them back out on the football field, the baseball field, the basketball field. Let us do that. Both, both cultures.
I I just want to address that the speaker, there was somebody else who spoke on Silas Field. Unfortunately, Silas Field is not our only problem. We've got a lot, we don't have enough fields for football, baseball and soccer. The ones we have get overused, it's very clear. Silas Field is in terrible shape. If we fixed it, it doesn't fix the problem, it just fixes, fixes one part of the problem. But I do wanna point out that we have a capital improvement plan that is supposed to come to the council in November. And I have it here, I think, I think we got it in our packet this week. In this capital, this is a recommendation from the planning board. And what they're recommending is artificial turf at Silas Field at the cost of four hundred thousand dollars for two years consecutive for two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. Total cost eight hundred thousand dollars. It's a lot of money. Just because they recommended it, doesn't mean it's gonna happen. It still have, the money has to be appropriated by the council. But it is a recommendation that's gonna come to us next month. I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Hot sign, hot. Thirteen fifty-one George Street. Council, how you doing? Um I I heard what you just said, but where does it, where does it start? You're saying eight hundred thousand, to me, that's pennies for our kids. That's pennies. That's pennies. You, I mean, you're throwing out a number, but you're not looking at the facts. You know, you you said four hundred thousand in one year and then You know, you said four hundred thousand in one year, and then for the whole year, it'll be eight hundred thousand. Okay, I hear that. But that's not solving the problem, right? You're throwing numbers. You know what I mean? We need to take care of that. We have to put in order. What's most important? That's what we have to do. What's most important? Where the eight hundred thousand dollars that we spend, go, how far would that go? That'd go a long way. That would go a real, a long way. So when you throw numbers at me personally, first of all, I'm the president of Pop Warner Cardinals. I'm not from Plainfield, but I've been playing for over twenty-some odd years. I coached all my life, basically. The team that just won two back-to-back state championships for basketball are my kids. The kids I had since they were ten years old, kept them in Plainfield because you had sources trying to send them to this school, that school, that school. So, I mean, I don't get the pat on the back, you know, but I'm not looking for that. But that's my team. The coach up there, he's a good guy, but those kids were battle tested before he got there. And why were they battle tested? Because of people like myself and Ron and Tammy. Because we put in the effort. We don't get paid for this. What we do is voluntary. You know, we don't get paid, but all we ask is that we have a levelled Plainfield. That's all we need. I spoke with Mr. Jackson, and that's basically why I was coming up here, because I heard Tammy speak. And I had a meeting with Mr. Jackson maybe two weeks ago. And he informed me, you know, of what's going on. And the things that he told me, I accepted because he's a good gentleman. And him and I sat down and we talked for about an hour about the city of Plainfield. And we talked about the fields, we talked about bathrooms, we talked about everything pertaining to our kids. So, I just want to say that I know Plainfield is going through a lot right now, but what city isn't. But like Ron just said, you know, we have these cities outside on our outskirts that are getting filled. I've heard this turf argument for the last four years. This is not new. I heard this about four years ago, that they were getting turfed. I heard that high school was getting turfed. I don't know how true it is. You know what I mean? But this is what's being told to us as coaches. I don't know if people are pacifists by telling us this. You know what I mean? But my thing is this, like I said, I spoke with Mr. Jackson. What he said to me, I accept. He told me, you know, that they got a, you know, monies were spent in other places. And I accept that. But all I'm saying is, when is it our turn? What's that, Rock Avenue? Just got a brand-new concession stand or whatever? I just want to know how to, and don't get me wrong, because the same kids that play football play baseball, play basketball, play soccer. So I know it has to be done. But how did they get in line first? That's my point. How did they get that? Who selected that? I don't know who selected that, you know what I mean? But like I said, there has to be an order. And we need to go with what's needed most. And I've never seen any of you guys down at a football game at Siler Field. I've never seen any of you guys at a basketball game until I brought you two championships. You know what I mean? I didn't. And then after, when we want to run, we see council people down at the game and wearing jackets and rings, and I'm like, where's my ring? Those are my kids. I wouldn't even acknowledge. And don't get me wrong, like I said, I mean, it's hard. I didn't put those kids where they are. Those kids and me put them where they are. Because had I not had good kids, I couldn't have done that. And so I give most of the credit to the kids for being the kids and being, they bought into my program. But like I said, I know you guys are working hard. I know the city has money that needs to be allocated in certain areas, but I just need to know when is our turn? That's all I knew. And thank you.
I just want to respond to that in reference to Mr. Eric Jackson. He is trying hard to do something for Siler Field. And also, I've been a great supporter of Plainfield sports all my life. And also, you know, your Pop Warner games are on Sunday. So half my youth choir is with you at Pop Warner on Sunday. I can't go on Sunday, but the other sports I support.
But I'm sorry, I don't mean to get out of turn, but I'm not, you know, I understand your situation, but you're not the only member of the board.
Well, you said the council.
Well, I was, in general, but I'm sorry. All right. If I could.
Yeah. And I don't think, I don't think it's, that you should expect every single council member to state that we support youth athletics, because I think we all do.
No, just one. All I need is one. All I need is one. I don't need every.
You may need one, but I think that a council as a whole needs to be acknowledged that we support and we will do what we can. I don't think we're going to solve this problem by pointing fingers at each other. I think we need to work together.
Good evening. Name is Howard Dixon, six hundred Sheridan Avenue.
Excuse me, sir. What is your name again? Speak up.
Name is Howard Dixon from six hundred Sheridan Avenue. I know they kind of walked out, but my son is also a part of the football team. And I have six children. And they're all grown up here in Plainfield. And what I'm trying to say is, just to go on that, I was hoping they would have stayed, but I know there's, a lot of people are kind of upset with everything that is going on. But the bottom line is, I saw where the Union County, I don't remember if it's the actual Board of Preoners or someone, but they got involved and they're now putting out money out there and helping to fix parks all over the county. Now, has the city council approached the people on the county level to make sure that we get some of those funds and these parts are fixed? Because that is something that I'm like, I've gone to just about all the fields that we play in, and we are the worst. And when I say the worst, I mean like, the worst one is that, is up here and we are all the way over in somewhere across Route twenty-two somewhere. Okay? And we need to change that. We need to change that for our kids. We need to change that so that the cops can approach a child on the street or approach a young person on the street and talk to them without having to say, put your hands behind you, click, click. We don't need that here. And that's all that's been happening. And we need a change in that. So I'll just, that's all I'm going to say to that, and I hope this council will take up the matter and help us with that. Okay? Now, next one I want to bring up is, I've heard everybody talking about Muhlenberg. Now, one of the things that I didn't hear is the amount of expansion that's going on over in Edison by JFK. Where did they get that money from? You know where they got that money from? Closing Muhlenberg. I've never, I watch politics and I follow politics and whatever. I've never known, I've never heard before that a government would take up seventy million dollars and give somebody to close a hospital. I just cannot believe it. And that's what happened. And you as the council, I beg you, I beg you to make sure that JFK doesn't get the chance to do whatever they feel like with this property. You guys, if you got to find a way to take it away from them, trust me, I'm sure Plainfield will stand with you. Okay? You've got Robert Wood Johnson and all the Rutgers people there, they're looking to find other places to do other things. You know, you don't have to wait on them to come to you. Go to them. We're not, we're not here to sit back and see who comes. Okay? You can approach people and say, what do you want to do? Like the lady who said, she has this doctor and so on. Reach out to these people. I hope there's a way for you to do that by setting politics aside and look at the betterment of Plainfield. Okay? So that's number two. Number three, and that's my last one. This is the safety director. Is this Mr. Helwitt? Sir, a year ago, my son was arrested. And he was arrested and locked up. And I'm going to mention the detective's name. As a matter of fact, you know, I don't know if I should do that or not. But I sent you a registered mail return receipt, which I received. My name is Howard Dixon, and you have never answered it. And now I have in-and-out bail bonds all over me, telling me that they're ready to sue me because I only gave them two thousand dollars down. They want their other five thousand. And guess what? It was the officer who pointed me to in-and-out mail bonds without telling me that I could have gone down to the county and put my car up as collateral or whatever and say, here. And then if they find him not guilty or whatever, I get everything back. Now, right now, I'm being harassed by lawyers for these people. Why haven't you answered my letter? And I brought it out to Mr. Adrian Mack, who is in my district, and I told him that at some point, I'm going to give every member of this council a copy of what I gave this gentleman, including the proof that I sent it to him, and I got back the return receipt. What is going on in this town? We put away a police commissioner here and we put this man in charge, and you can't find him and you can't talk to him. I called the office, begging them to let me talk to this man. This man is missing. Where does he live? Does he live in Plainfield? Is he serving Plainfield? What is going on here? I don't understand. And my son has to be going through that. And then what happens? I'm trying to get this detective to tell me what really happened. Guess what? Find out. The detective is a buddy of another detective who has, who is the girlfriend of the gentleman that was against, that was reporting everything against my son. What did they say he do? He said he came with his bike and threatened him. And then they tell me that it's a seven thousand dollars bail. And the detective tells me, oh, your son has prior arrest. I says, oh, yeah? Wonder which one? Could you tell me which one? Tell me one. He couldn't find anything. And then, not only that, at the time of his arrest, do you know what this did? And it's in my paper. At the time of my son's arrest, the detective had the audacity to call me, well, I shouldn't say audacity, and let me take that back. The detective called me and asked me if I could go find out where one of these people who were going, who was pressing charges against my son lived. Three o'clock in the morning, and guess what? From the day that happened, it's still on my cellphone. I still have the message. So there is nobody who can tell me that it's a lie. Okay? So, council, I beg you. I don't know what you can do to help me with this, but I need this gentleman to respond to me. And I need some legal advice here, because I need some relief. Thank you very much, everyone.
Mr. Campbell.
Okay, no problem. You know, I came to speak about Muhlenberg and I just feel, John Campbell again, fourteen oh four Highland Avenue, Madam President, Council for the opportunity. You know, I'm hearing a lot about the recreation situation at Siler Field, about crime, I'm not sure of the gentleman before me, the circumstances of his son's situation, but, you know, I think we need more youth engagement. Okay? I think our young people are misdirected. You know, I remember being in the recreation department and being, as a youngster, I used to be too short for the mic now, too tall for it. You know, I remember being in rec and just having this sense of pride, you know, in participating in it, you know? And I was, it was great because there were so many young people involved, and it gave them something to do. So when we talk about youth engagement and, you know, keeping them on the right track, you know, we need to give young people guidance and give them something to do. So I think addressing the Siler Field issue is something that we need to look at. And I think looking at, you know, other forms of engagement is something that we need to look at. Because they're our future. The young people are our future, you know, so we need to prepare them for it now. You know, I'd like to see, you know, some of the young people coming out to the council meetings and speaking about their concerns. Secondly, the Muhlenberg situation. Again, you know, it's clearly evident, I don't think there's anyone in this chamber or anyone in this municipality, whether they live in the director's city of Muhlenberg or not, who would say that we want six hundred apartment units. I don't think anyone is for that. You know, one of the beautiful things about democracy is, as voters, we've got the opportunity to voice our concern. Okay? It's an election year. You know, we need to exercise that voice, exercise it wisely. So, with that being said, I don't think that there's anyone who's going to support anyone in the council or any prospective member of any legislative body within our municipality or our state who would be in favor of this. So, I would encourage you all, you know, upon looking at this study that you just voted on, to not even consider the six hundred units. I think it'd be a detriment to our community, you know, to figure one person on average, one child on average per apartment. You almost have to build a new school for that. There's no way you're going to be able to accommodate these young people, you know? And again, people move to that neighborhood for tree-lined streets, for nice backyard or some frontage, they don't move there, you know, for six hundred apartment units. Yeah, I know in real estate, both of the people who are purchasing right now are purchasing FHA loans, okay, which require three and a half percent down, which, you know, makes it a little bit easier. If you go to the conventional, you have to put twenty percent down. Now, with these apartments, if they don't have fifty-one percent ownership, FHA will not insure them. Okay? So, and I know Miss Bees is in real estate, so she knows something about that. So, again, I would strongly consider you, strongly urge you to vote against anything involving development at that campus unless it's for a full-service medical facility.
Tony Rucker, eight twenty-five Berkeley Avenue. I had a question regarding, I know, a few years ago, I actually asked a question, I think it was to the city administrator regarding ambulances. I, the point I'm getting at is, I actually went down and spoke with some of the volunteers, and they do a great job, I mean, with the resources that they have. And I'm sure that the council's probably familiar with the facilities down there. Not only do we have a hospital issue, okay, but you've got to be able to get to the hospital. And I think that it was, I think when I went down there, the one, they had two ambulances, one of which were not working, and then the shift that they work are just unbelievable. So, I asked the question, what is the position of the council and the, at the time of the administration regarding putting on an additional ambulance? And I know that that comes along associated with the course of operating, you know, operating another ambulance. I think it's important for everybody to understand is that there are different levels of ambulance. You know, there are people that can pick you up and put you in a car and take you to wherever, which happened to me, I had to go to Summit. And then there's somebody that with higher medical ability can do different things and triage right on the spot. So, the quality of our medical services is important, how we get to the hospital, but the competence and the qualifications of the medical professionals that pick us up. And I think right now, you know, like I said, sometimes you get different people coming into Plainfield when we have an emergency, like I mentioned earlier. And the police were good, they got there, they got there first. But my point is, is that I hope that the council considers adding that into their, you know, maybe the executive budget will come in and add that in. Because, I mean, on average, whatever we pay for taxes, right? I mean, I would, I would pay an extra five hundred dollars for taxes if it, you know, saved my life, because the bottom line is, is that what good is, what good is if you're paying whatever you're paying if you're going to pay an extra five hundred, whatever it would be, you know what I mean? To have that as an operating cost. We have to have the ability to get to a hospital. And I know if you look at the arrival time to Summit, it took me twenty, it took them half an hour to get there, and it took me twenty-three minutes to get to Summit. Okay? And like I said, when you have children, it becomes real sensitive. And that's a quality of life issue. When they were talking about the kids, that's a quality of life issue as a parent. And when it comes to as far as the type of people we want to attract and retain, you make that judgment every day. Is my family going to be safe there? If something happens, how quickly can I get to a hospital? Pertaining to the children and to the kids, this is the buzzword, everybody's talking about millennials. Millennials are the thing that everybody's trying to get. They're young, they're educated, they're mobile, they can move anywhere they want. Precisely the people that we're trying to educate here in Plainfield. And believe me, the young man that went to Yale, went to the basketball, listen, he has a choice to live wherever he wants. We want to create a situation where we can retain the talent we have here in Plainfield. We don't want him to go someplace and not come back. So I think there's a lot of things, a lot of things to consider, but, you know, developing that talent and retaining it is essential and pleased. My question specifically is, is will somebody look into whether or not that is a possibility of us actually getting a train, better training staff for the ambulance service and another operating ambulance? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Robin Bright, twelve eighty-two Marion Avenue. And I want to speak on the Muhlenberg JFK proposal. I'm really disappointed that the council approved to spend forty-eight thousand dollars. I'm really disappointed that the council approved to spend $48,000 of city taxpayers' money to do a study that JFK themselves should be doing. They should come before you and ask you for a variance and not do their job by approving a $48,000, uh, study. That money could've went to Snoty Field to redo that field. We're just wasting the money. I hope that since this, uh, council approved that, that when they do their meetings, they're supposed to have four meetings in the community, that I see every last one of you council members there at those meetings, at every meeting. So, you can hear firsthand from all of the city that we'll be there. And I hope that when they do, whatever they come back with the study, whatever decision they make, I hope that the city council votes against a 600-unit apartment complex in that neighborhood. That's something the city does not need. We have more than our fair share of apartments. It's gonna be a burden on the homeowners. It's gonna be a burden on the school, the city, uh, the streets, everything. It's just too much. It's not needed and it's not wanted. Thank you.
That study is not a JFK study. That's an independent study.
Those people are our people.
City taxpayers' money.
But the, the people. But wasn't it, the people are our people.
Yeah.
Mrs. Sabio Francis Lane, 1446 Francis Lane. I have a petition signed of every homeowner on Francis Lane. We, the residents of Francis Lane in Plainfield, New Jersey, were promised by the town of Plainfield that due to the condition of our street, it would be fully repaved by June the 1st, 2013. Up to this date, it has not been completed and we are truly disgusted. The conditions are such that it is only one matter of time before someone is injured walking across the street or damage is done to someone's vehicle due to the potholes in the road. Simply, patching the holes is not acceptable. It was done last year, it's totally resurfacing again. We are requesting once again that the road be completely repaved in a timely fashion. Winter will be upon us shortly and we like the town of Plainfield to keep its promise. So, I got the petition, looked at pictures, dropped the ones this morning, the way it looked when it, when the potholes were fixed, that they're all resurfacing again. So, I did this for you guys.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Um, I had a question to, um, our ci- city administrator. The money's for the Muhlenberg study, which is not a JFK study, it's an independent study. Um, those dollars is allocated from?
Those, uh, the funds for the JFK study, for the Muhlenberg study, I should say, were part of the 2013 budget.
Thank you.
And those people are actually going to be working for us. They're not working for JFK.
Council on agrees.
They need to know what's happening.
Council on agrees. We stated independent study outside of J- JFK, that's exactly what it means, independent.
I'm back. I'm back, Richard Spicer, 1467 Francis Lane. What I have here is, uh, from April, April 8th, ordinance for April 8th about the roads in presidential, in presidential ways. I had, since I don't, since I don't get no feedback, only feedback that I got was from Miss Gray. Right? They said our roads would be done in October. Okay? April, uh, it was approved by the planning board. I went to the pla- I went to see Mr. Jackson last week. And what he had informed me, it was approved by the planning board in April. Right? The city council denied. Why?
That's not true, sir. That's not true.
That's not true.
That's not true.
That's what, that's what we were.
Repeat that again?
The city council denied the bond. It was for 300, uh, 3,150,000.
Yes.
So, how is that true?
That's true.
So, why was it denied?
Why, what's the reason?
What's the reason for the denial? And we're supposed to be scheduled again, it's gonna be put in again for 2014. And we're supposed to be first on the list if it's not denied again.
Yeah.
So, can you tell me why?
Why, what's the reason? Well, it was, they, you know, it's not.
On behalf of, on behalf of the council, the best I can explain is that it was brought before the council. It was the second bond ordinance of the year. Uh, the council, uh, in their deliberations believed that it was, uh, an over expenditure for the city to take on a second, uh, capital improvement project in the same year, um, and decided to revisit the issue in the, in the following year. So, it was a fiscal determination.
Of course. Of course, of course, right?
It wa- it was a fiscal decision, um, and, and nothing more. I think that, that, from based on my understanding of the deliberations.
So, it's gonna, it's, it's gonna come up again in September?
Yes.
It's gonna be denied again?
No.
No.
Can I count on that? I just wanted to say a little.
You can, you can count on it. Thank you.
I will, I will have to keep going back. I'm staying there.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and Madam President. It's indeed a pleasure to be here, uh, looking at you folks doing your fine legislating. Uh, I recall when, uh,
Your name is Johnson.
I'm sorry. My name is John Campbell, senior. Uh, I live at 1404 Highland Avenue with Wilma Campbell. I recall, uh, we always talk about and participate in voter registration. But what we need a little more of is voter education. Uh, a lot of these problems that I hear the people addressing tonight are a result of line A all the way. Uh, I recall when this hospital was closed, they had a hearings, uh, some 1,000, 1,500 people participate. Uh, I also recall Governor Goldman, I'm sorry, Corzine, Governor Gore, Corzine was the chief officer. Jerry Assemblyman Pro Temp, Jerry Green was the assemblyman along with Mrs. Linda Stender. And you think that's bad? You went out, when they came up for reelection, and voted for him. Vote for him. Fortunately, Mr. Corzine didn't make it back to the State House, but Mr. Green and Miss Stender did. So, we are victims of, we have a lot of self-imposed problems. I know this is a, a very partisan town, but you gotta consider where this property is located. The Muhlenberg site. Says 17 acres, but if you consider two or three-block radius of the neighborhood surrounded, there are more assets at stake with the property owners than it is with this one property owner. And I'm sure that Salars had the wherewithal to, with all this laws, or sell it. And, uh, I've never seen a piece of property, very few pieces of property been on the market actively trying to get a buyer for five years. I've never seen a sign on a property. I've never seen it listed anyplace. And I want to get anybody in the chambers can tell me what the sales price is. So, how can you market a property if you wanna what you're selling for? You don't put it on the market, and you don't put up a sale sign. And you come back five years later, it's up again, sell. Well, if you do that to your house, guess what? You won't sell it either. Who knows, it's for sale. So, being this nigga so partisan, I got a little poem for you. I know you're Democratic-born and you're Democratic-bred, but if you don't get some treatment when you sick, you'll be Democratic-dead.
Any more speakers?
Saying no more. May I suggest that we close the hearing?
Are you making a motion?
Making a motion to close the hearing.
All those in favor? All right. Any opposed, any extensions? You have a motion to adjourn?
Come on.
All those in favor? Uh, any opposed, any standing?
When is it our?